Any questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer.
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Stone.
Yes. And do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report dated June 30th, 2013?
So.
We're killing this.
Okay, Ryan?
Brief comments. Want you to know where we kind of ended the fiscal year 2013. Deficit was $321,462, uh, margin improvement over prior fiscal year. One percent forecast, so I'm pleased with that. Um, looking for some challenges coming this year, increasing expenses and increasing revenue, which is kind of the fiscal picture locally. Still waiting to see how the state budget shakes out. Uh, there were some initial projections forecasting the game. Mr. Kimball and I are going to a workshop early in August. Information not getting back and he's getting back. There are a lot of questions on the ATM they're really using the capital of that. I've heard as far back as 2010. If that's the case, obviously, the revenue's not going to be nearly as high as projected because of the decrease in rolling faced, um, which begs the question if OD hasn't been able to project this formula and start paying off yet, how did they arrive at the calculations initially? Uh, OD's still working on their formula. So there's a lot of questions as to how this is actually going to be calculated at this point. They're bridging the bridge, if you will. I've been told I should see a true up in September. So revenue picture for new state budget is still very much in doubt. Instead of calculations on that one. So if you have any questions on that, we don't know. We don't know if this one could run that up here in the complex workshops and so forth. Second big item that I think is important for you to keep updated on the chillers. Insurance company has agreed to cover the loss we sustained with both of those. My understanding was today they were going to begin taking out the old units. New ones are still slated to put in prior to the start of school. I think there's about a week to work with there. So all indications are at this point there will be air conditioning back up around the building, so. Did you see any activity in the building today?
No.
Okay, maybe that didn't stir it yet. Um, wrapping up fiscal year in process and beginning the preparation for work with our owners. So July's going to be busy on that next couple of weeks, I believe, so as well.
Do you have any questions for Ryan?
Just wondered how food service ended up this year. Just got an email the other day. Uh, off the top of my head, there was a deficit of, I believe, $59,147, um, which Sedexo is going to cover between the partnership and management fees and so forth. We're going to be made whole with that. Uh, we have a meeting coming up with JJ, a week or so to discuss that true up, uh, confirm with the numbers that we had.
I think the most that right now we're facing, um, I've got to figure here was, uh, of course he's candiding upside down. I think we're going to be on the hook for $13,000, even though the, um, deficit, uh, is much larger than that. Uh, they are covering their guaranteed management fees, administrative fees, uh, and we talked to them at length to split the ultimate loss with us this year, and they've agreed to do that. They've been a very good partner.
Yeah, that was originally not in the contract, so they stepped up and assisted with that.
Yeah. But we really think that that $13,000 deficit that we face this year on our books is going to be erased next year with the combined food service we're going for. So we'll have much more meal plans between the two schools and the management fees will be spread out between two districts as opposed to one. And, uh, we anticipate a break even for next year.
Forecasted break even, better purchasing power in two districts. That's the hope at this point.
They would not guarantee, uh, break even this year if we were the state on our own. So.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Mr. Murtagh.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer.
Yes.
Mrs. Stone.
Yes. Don't we have an addendum this evening?
No.
Good. Uh, committee reports. Mr. Stone.
Thank you. Um, House Book of United is still kind of the hot topic, the education tax policy. We put out an analysis which basically shows that, uh, there seems to be a significant increase in fiscal year two, excuse me, two, uh, school funding in fiscal years 14 and 15. Uh, that would be approximately $831 million. However, it will not make up the deficit losses that we suffered by approximately $600 million. Now, that's significant in terms of the whole amount of loss in school funding. It's merely a piece. Uh, even more disconcerting is that, uh, poor rural districts are only going to receive an eight percent increase over the course of that time, whereas your wealthier suburban districts are looking at a 14 percent increase. So, uh, while it's, we're getting, it looks like 14 and 15 will be getting some more revenue than we would be in your fiscal year 13 still comparatively speaking to our wealthier districts. Just, just overhand, so. That's my report. Oh, I do want to say one thing. Uh, Jeff and Joe and Nancy Fisher, I want to give them a lot of, uh, credit. They went to Washington DC with the Robert Kennedy Center's Speak Truth to Power Summer, uh, Summer Program Teaching Program. They're out there right now. Our case I'm paying for them to go out. Uh, they're going through some training and, uh, being a part of helping to develop that program, uh, further with teachers from all over the country, so. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Schiefer.
Well, athletics, uh, well, fall season will be upon us. They're pretty set, you know, uh, teams have been practicing and getting ready. Um, weather's been playing havoc with, uh, being able to get practicing in and also with the improvements out of the athletic complex. Things are moving, but they're kind of moving a little slow, slower than what we'd like at the moment. So with that, we anticipate things being completed by as close to the start of the season as, as possible and, uh, so we'll keep an eye on that. If Mr. Kimball has anything further to elaborate on in, uh, this section of the statement, he probably will. And lastly, uh, we're, as everyone now knows, we are, we've lost our athletic director. Mr. Jeffrey is, uh, moving on to Mylan Edison, um, and, uh, we wish him well in his new venture up there, getting closer to home with his family. And, uh, just want to personally, and Bill, I'll take the liberty of having the board to thank Tom and, uh, Amy for her contribution with, uh, helping out with the cheerleading, being advisor, and, uh, we, uh, will miss them and, uh, wish them well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, Pioneer was business as usual for this time of year. We did spend a lot of time talking about, in the budget building, this has nothing to do with the budget, but they decided that they were going to.
Yeah, yeah, sticking something that has nothing to do with the budget on. How they want vocational schools' boards to be comprised up. And it's very different from what has been done in the past. They are going to now take, the way I understand it, this board will have to appoint someone to the Pioneer Board that is not on this board. They have to be, yeah, they have to be a CFO or a CEO of a company. Um, you know, because you got people out there just dying to be on, you know, that are CFOs and CEOs of companies, you know, ready to go serve on a school board. Um, you know, we find it very, uh, disconcerting because there are going to be people, more than likely unless something changes, that are going to be serving on boards that have to be held accountable for public money, but they are not going to be publicly elected. So I think it'll be, I, I'm not sure how they think this is going to work out. I heard it got slipped in there by a lawmaker that was mad because he wanted to be on a vocational board at one point in his life, and they told him he couldn't because he wasn't on a school board. Yeah, it's true enough, it probably is, and, um, so we'll see how that works, but it, it'll be, uh, be a very interesting change for Pioneer.
So when does that?
Oh, that starts like, yeah, January. Let's say that I'm done, and so you guys are going to have to appoint someone at camp as, as of January 1st. It's going to have to be somebody from the business sector.
They'll be lying.
Won't they? They'll be knocking your guys' door down.
Yeah, well, I'll have to do a screen card turn.
And that's the end of my report. Dr. Johnson?
Well, you had an update from Mr. Kimball regarding the new OD report card, and it sounds like there's still some things that they need to work on and get to us, and I assume at some point we'll have the full version of that. I do know there's apparently some debate about the end of course assessments and some other parts of that that are apparently still kind of up in the air.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, what we thought was a done deal is ever changing, and just like that, I believe that, uh, that we're proficient teacher and need a teacher evaluation not being changed to skillful.
Skillful.
Yeah. So that's, you know, another change that we thought everything was set in stone and has continued to change. So we'll keep our ear to the ground with regards to end of course assessments. Um, at this point, we're proceeding that, uh, that those will be in place in the 14, 15 school year, uh, for those, I believe we start out with 10 end of course, uh, exams and then we'll go from there, so. Uh, we have not, um, stepped aside, uh, away from, uh, that avenue of getting prepared for those end of course exams.
It also sounds like common course still continues to be debated, at least nationally, but the legislature in Ohio is pretty firmly behind that as far as we know.
At this point, yes. The current legislation.
Today.
Today.
We bet on it tomorrow.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Murtagh?
I have nothing to report at this time. Because everything's so well.
That was well. Thank you.
The least I could do.
You're right.
Oh, my gosh. We'll go to the superintendent's report. Do you have one?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
President Stone members of the board, uh, two items I'd like to report out on today. The first, it was touch upon, and Mr. Schiefer's updated, and that's the, uh, progression of the, uh, upgrades to the athletic complex. Happy to report that the old, uh, outdated unsafe visitor bleachers have been pulled down and removed along with the press box that was causing, uh, the unsafe bleachers. The current asphalt and old fencing at the athletic complex has all been removed. At this point, we're awaiting inspection on our concrete base for under the new visitor bleachers to be inspected and poured tomorrow, and we're anticipating the removal of the current base under the asphalt, the old base to be removed because we learned that we needed to put an additional, um, depth of base. Uh, so we're going to tear out 11 inches of the current dirt, mostly dirt and stone, bring in eight inches of new stone to be, uh, uh, compacted, and then, uh, I believe three inches of asphalt. So that work will be being done in the next two weeks. New fencing will be completed then, and the new, uh, bleachers erected in time for the, um, football season to start. Uh, we do plan on having a presentation of the athletic lights and a, an honorary general electrician in town who helped donate a good portion of the light project. Uh, so that's scheduled for Friday, September 6th, our first home varsity football game with lights in use, so we'll keep our fingers crossed that things progress, um, on those, uh, on those fronts. Uh, there is a little bit of work being done at the annex building to prepare the educational options classroom. Uh, a new heating and cooling system for the, uh, back portion or the front portion of the annex is being installed as we speak. Uh, Mr. Burke and I, whoever else wants to help paint that room, it's going to be taking place this weekend. We have the carpet on order, uh, and the computers are in, and so we're going to scavenge, uh, uh, dig up some computer desk in the secondary, um, school to, uh, to, to finish out, uh, finishing out that classroom. So first day of school will be up and operational for our students to take, uh, advantage of non-traditional tech classes, and, uh, so we're excited, excited about that. Uh, we're taking a visit down to Trucker tomorrow to complete the curriculum for the online courses that will be available for students to take either for credit recovery, credit attainment, or credit advancement in that program. So, um, things are progressing very well. And I've asked, uh, Mr. Henderson, as he's transitioning in his new role as curriculum director, to spend, uh, just a couple of minutes highlighting the, what we know at this point with regards to the new local report card, uh, and, uh, the changes that are occurring, um, within that, and the addition of the new letter grades. So, Mr. Henderson?
Thank you. Um, just pursuant to that report card, uh, that will be released at the end of, uh, end of August, uh, we can, over the past month, we, the building administrators, myself and Mr. Kimball have been reviewing the secure data center, all of our, uh, all of our attendance information, our enrollment information, our testing data, who, uh, how, uh, all the students perform from our alternative assessment students to our OAA, um, OAA students and our OGT students performed on the assessments last year, and we have a pretty, pretty solid picture what that report card's going to look like. Um, as a district, uh, we have, we will have met 13 of 26 indicators for this report card, um, and in the new grading, the new A through F report card grading system, uh, just that measure alone, the achievement results, uh, that would mean we met 50, 50 percent of the indicators, which, um, as a district will give us earnest a letter grade of a D. We met the state indicators in third grade reading and math, fourth grade reading, seventh grade reading, eighth grade reading, uh, 10th grade reading and mathematics, and all of the, all of the areas, um, testing areas, and 11th grade reading, writing math, social studies, and science.
Well, Mr. Henderson, a couple of the areas, we were very close at the sophomore level, like 74.7 percent, I believe, in mathematics, which does not roll up.
And in writing.
In writing.
In writing, we were three tenths of a point away from, from meeting that standard.
We're very close, I believe, in mathematics either, also, but.
Yeah, now we did meet the standard there.
With the new letter grade, if we, even if we were to obtain those two additional areas, which would put us at 14 out of 24.
14 out of 26, yeah.
14 out of 26, the percent, even though it would improve, would not take us to the next letter grade jump, so we'd still be classified to be.
Right.
As opposed to, the old, uh, rating would be an effective rating, and, and so, you know, uh, a D to me, at least public perception, sounds much worse than an effective rating. Uh, but just be prepared that that's the, the avenue, that each of these, I believe, will be eventually six categories of local report card, uh, will be deemed a letter grade as opposed to a, uh, a, a rating of, uh, of, of what has been the past for us, effective or continuous improvement.
And, and we did, we did meet the attendance mark as a district, will not admit as, we will not admit the graduation, uh, requirement, uh, for the class of 2012, which is a year looked back when it, when it flies into the report card. As a district, uh, we have a performance index of a 90 out of a possible 120, which is a 75 percent C, uh, that will be rated there. Um, and again, uh, graduation rate 2012, at the 86 percent, the four-year graduation rate, that's a C. Five-year graduation rate, uh, is a 90.7, which would be a B rating there. Another interesting, uh, area to note, a new area on the report card is the annual measure objectives area, and this is replacing the AYP in the state accountability system, and this has to do with gap closing. And what that means is how are the different racial demographic groups performing against other racial demographic groups in the state of Ohio, also compared to how these groups did the year before. In USIRIS, uh, our subgroups are measured, uh, we, we have obviously all students, white, non-Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. If we have a subgroup that's less than 30, they do not, those aren't tabulated, those aren't counted for us. Um, and so there's an annual measure objective that pertains to reading, math, and graduation rate. And, and as those have been, those standards have now been set through the year 2017 and 18 in reading and mathematics. For this year, um, the mark was 83.4 percent in reading. Mathematics was 78.5 percent, and those increase incrementally through 17, 18. And our annual measure objectives, there's not enough time here at this meeting tonight for me to explain how that will, um, be rated. So I'll also be happy to send you something, the gap closing report for the Missouri City Schools, so you can see. I believe Mr. Kimball did send that out with his most recent bulletin, so you can compare how our students and subgroups did with what the, what the standards are. Also, the graduation goals, um, increase incrementally through the year 2018, 19, where the goal is to have a 90 percent graduation rate. So in terms of the work that we're doing with graduation rate here, uh, and with our reading and mathematics, um, our, our focus is, is on all of those areas, uh, and so, uh, I feel confident with the work that our administrators and teachers are doing. We're going to show, uh, improvement in reaching these standards. Interesting, also interesting to note, annual measure objectives, um, there is a demotion component to this, meaning when everything's calculated, how our students do, we'll be assigned a letter grade A, B, C, D, or F based on, the, the, based on, based on a point system. But if we have any one of our subgroups not meet the required standards as outlined here, um, whether it's our, um, our students with disability or economically disadvantaged students, our grade will be demoted by one letter grade. Now, if we have multiple areas, like we have one group that doesn't graduate, um, doesn't meet the graduation requirement, but they also don't meet the reading requirement, we only get one demotion. So we're not, let's say we have an A, but one subgroup doesn't meet it, we're not going to keep continually demoted to an F. You only earn one demotion for, as a district, based on how the subgroups do. Um, so it's really, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting and important for us to share with the teachers, first of all, who our subgroups are highly performed this year, and then really kind of create target groups of students where we can emphasize how we're going to, uh, make sure that we're closing that gap, which is, uh, it's a huge component to, uh, what our district report card is, and really, that's always been our focus here in the district, is really focusing on these, on specific groups of students and what they need, uh, what individual attention they need, uh, to demonstrate improvement. So, uh, the work that we're doing, uh, we're on the right track, but the, but the expectations are changing from the state level, and so we're going to have to adjust to those as a district.
I have an idea. Why don't we, I mean, check of standardization, just like kind of what we did with our state legislatures themselves, and see just how, I mean, we create them, and we pay them based upon the grade.
It's not a bad idea. Because every time, every time we start to understand something, it changes.
Yeah, and this is.
Right.
Well, my fear, like I said, is that to me, there's a totally different public perception of effective rating.
For goodness.
As opposed to a D.
Are you kidding me?
And, and I do know, listen, we got our work cut out for us. We, we, we know that we have to get better. Um, but, uh, at the same point, um, our teachers need to continually be supported and, and, and.
Absolutely.
Uh, they, you know, they have a very tough job working with our students, and the ever change in, um, standards, they're being asked to live by, and that the new teacher evaluation system is, is high pressure and, and, and hopefully we can work together, be supportive of each other, um, because, uh, the, the, the climate culture is changing for the negative with this increased pressure and increased, uh, um, look at how, how students are performing.
Yeah, what's going to end up happening? Good, good kids, if it's wannabe teachers, they're not going to, you know, they're not going to put up with this. I mean, they can go out and get, make a whole lot more money in the private sector and not have to put up with all this crap, for lack of a better word, that the state is throwing on us. I mean, it's just.
We do have some work to do with our public, especially education, and them on this new report card, and our staff. Uh, there is, uh, smoke signal, the August traditional smoke signals was, was, uh, was sent to the premise today through several edits, so that'll be hitting the doorstep here by the end of the week. And in there, we did put an article about explaining the new report card, uh, so I'd encourage the community to read that, but also then come to the state of the schools dress on September 9th, uh, to hear a short explanation of, of how things are changing. Uh, we'll be spending some time with our staff on that due, um, or the teacher work day on the 23rd, uh, and explaining them, you know, what, if they, they've seen some preliminary things. Last year, as we rolled it out, we said, you know, if the new report card was in place, this is where we'd be, but now we're dealing with real data that will hit the, the public, and, and so we're going to spend some time talking about what that report card looks like and all the data measures and how we can get better. That ends my report, because there's no other questions.
Is there another couple of measures that they haven't reported on? Is there a college ready, career ready, preparedness?
Yeah, we haven't seen that yet.
There's also a financial piece as well, and, um, that's.
In, in the physical education piece that we, we haven't seen, what, what, what we're dealing with, with this report is, is strictly based on attendance, graduation rate, and our, uh, student's performance on the OAA and OGT and alternate assessment.
You know, what sounds like what used to be a little positive, uh, piece for us is that closing the gap, you know, has now turned to, to kind of some, what, kind of a negative now, uh, because of really, um, with that annual measurable, measurable objectives, uh, they're really, you know, leaving no, um, before if we started here, moved up, we'd get credit for it, but now it's like if you don't hit this mark, you get, you'd get no credit at all, even though you may have grew your kids a great amount, but if you didn't hit that required certain percent of, uh, standard, you're not going to get any credit now at all.
Yeah, the finish line has changed.
Yeah, the finish line has changed big time. And so where we used to get a plus, we actually are demoted now, a letter Z, uh, with annual measurement objectives, Roy and F, because there's certain groups that we weren't able to, to grow to the, to extend, the extent of what, um, the state expenses deserve.
Financial piece, they're going to compare us with what we're, you know, broadly accounting wise, as well as comparable districts in the state, looking at dollars pumped into the classroom, administrative costs, et cetera. So we're going to have to look at their coding now and classify them.
People just don't have anything to do.
Hey, if Columbus, we could hire, we'd probably solve all of our problems.
No, you're.
That ends my report, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, Kevin.
Bloomy Gus.
Uh, don't believe anybody wants to address the board this evening. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to our personnel certified staff items this evening. Mr. Kimball?
President Stone members of the board, it's my recommendation that the board education approved items A through B under the personnel certified staff section, and I would like to point out that one of our hires, uh, Mr. Striker, Striker, excuse me, Mike Striker is here today, tonight, uh, new art teacher for secondary building, and so we'd like to welcome Mr. Striker to the district upon, upon your approval of the recommendation.
Boy, you're putting the heat on us. Do I have a motion to accept the personnel certified staff items?
So.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call please.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Murtagh?
Yes.
Don't hold against Mike, he's a Downing graduate.
I am.
Uh, has spent, uh, last, I believe, four years, uh, split in time between Downing St. Joe's and then ultimately transitioned up to New London. and then ultimately transitioned up to New London.
Yep.
So we look forward to, I was teasing Mike, he was New London's athletic director last year. So when we start our interview, I'd asked him if he was interviewing for the R position or our athletic director position, or both. So, but we do want to welcome Mike to the redneck family.
Yes, welcome. Nice to have you here. It was nice of you to come this evening.
Yeah, thank you. It was a short trip.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to our personnel classified staff items.
Presenting members of the board, it's my recommendation, you approve items A through G under the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to, for personnel classified staff items.
So.
Support.
I got a question. Under discussion for, under B? So. Still staying on?
Yeah, Mrs. Jeffrey, we're accepting, in C, we're accepting her resignation as a A.
Okay.
Assistant coach. She is still going to be around and willing to help out, but doesn't know if she's going to be able to fulfill the whole teaching or the whole coaching contract for training, which runs both fall and winter season. But does want, does plan to not leave. This is only high and dry. Would like to be involved as much as possible in volunteer capacity. So yes, we're approving her as, accepting resignation as paid position, but then we're going to hire her as a volunteer.
Right.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Well, Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. And then we'll go to the business items. Mr. Kimball?
Presenting members of the board, it's my recommendation, the board approves items A through K under the business section of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the business section of the agenda?
Still moving. Support.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to point out that the lunch prices are no increase of the previous year. And so even with the struggles we had to balance the budget and food service, we're aware of the financial condition and economic, economics of the, of the community and choose to, chose to lock the prices in as no increase for next year.
Thank you. And if you look at item F, when we all leave here, we can all go drive a bus.
Can we have a second?
We begin call tomorrow. Call you soon.
Oh, roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. We'll hit the discussion items. Looks like we need to appoint a delegate and alternate to the annual business meeting at the capital conference. So who's the?
Not it.
Not it.
Drop a quote.
Oh, there it is. So don't everybody say, hey, I'll do it.
I'll be down there. I'll be glad to do it, but I don't, if someone wants to do it, it's a once in a lifetime, it's great.
Has anybody not done it?
Once in a lifetime.
I've had it more than once in a lifetime.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
I'll, I'll throw my hat on that one.
Do you or, do you guys want, you guys want to go?
I was the first one to touch my nose, so I'd know you were.
No, thank you.
Okay, you want to go, let's talk.
There are other once in a lifetime.
I'm just not familiar with that.
You know, that's not going to fly.
My first year, it's good for every exception.
You guys call the delegate and judge the alternate.
Did you do this last year?
You guys just don't do this fast enough.
That's good.
Yeah. Not it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And then capital conference. Yeah. Does everybody plan on going and staying?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it looks like you can set us all up. Okay. Taking care of communications. Did you come up with some possible dates?
Yeah, Ryan and I talked, looking at the calendar here.
Board work session.
The 13th of August is available for us. And also that'd be an evening thing during the week, correct?
Yeah.
Potentially the 20th.
What time are we?
Your guys' call if it works.
I would request that it be after 5:30 or 6:00 to the football practice.
The other thing I do want to point out that I'll probably be asking for a special board meeting. Maybe we do it in conjunction, anticipate an athletic director recommendation. And I don't want to wait till the 22nd of August to get that first approved, so.
Well, Kevin, if we do an evening, are we going to have enough time to cover?
Everything we need to cover.
Yeah.
Well, maybe. I'm worried about the Saturdays now, between now and school starting because of a number of things that are already planned. But I don't think anybody wants to do anything Saturday or Friday, or stuff on the 17th. There's a family wedding. So I. I don't want to do it real late in an holiday Saturday.
That's fine.
I was staying late.
Hey, that's fine. Maybe we can do it at the same time. So you said you have the 13th and the what?
The 20th, but I, I know that we don't want to go any later than the 13th if we're going to do a special board. And I say we have to kill two birds with one stone, but we can get something scheduled to do a quick approval of the athletic director. But the, the evening of the 13th and 20th, I can make work.
Do you have your calendar saved?
I, yeah.
What was the 13th?
I have a trial, and it's going to go, but I can be back by 5:30. It's going to be going.
So if we started at 5:30?
6:00, I would say.
6 o'clock?
I can be, I can be here by 6:00, and my practice is 3:00 to 5:30.
Okay, well, why don't we just plan on the 13th? And I asked Kevin if he would to possibly see if he could get Officer Walker to come in and just, we're just going to talk a little bit about our buildings and safety and things like that with Officer Walker.
Is it to favor the board to have the administrative team ask it?
I think so. Don't you guys?
For the discussion, yeah.
Well, for all of it, yeah. That'd be good.
Okay, so we're looking at Tuesday, August 13th, 6:00 P.M. And potentially, we may do a 6 o'clock hire of the athletic director if things line up time-wise, and then move right into the work session.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, that, I was thinking that was during school. Time-wise makes no difference to me. Because they'll be doing two days.
Here we were, planning it all around a bracket.
I like your, I like your.
You want to start at 5:30?
That's fine. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
If I could just make a suggestion, I don't speak for the other board members, but I hope we could make this as much a dialogue as a presentation. Yeah, I don't want to sit here for four hours and hear people presenting.
No.
I mean, I think there's, obviously, we've got to give the information, yeah, but I don't want to parade of speakers.
No.
I hope we could have a little more dialogue and this stuff.
I think that's what we had in mind.
Yep.
Something we talked about. If, you know, if you guys have specific issues you'd like to touch on, email me, I'll get it to Kevin. Tell him that kind of some of the areas that we want to, we want to discuss with everybody. Okay?
Before we get into facilities and permanent improvement meetings and stuff, do you want to take them here?
I don't know that we're going to get that for. I think, I think right now, maybe we'll do that, maybe later on in the fall, but I think right now, maybe stick more with curriculum and.
And I'll follow right up with Officer Walker, first thing to see if he can come in and we'll get that to kick off the school safety and.
Right.
And do that first, and then we'll get into curriculum and things like this. Next month, I'm going to kind of shift some reporting around on rebuilding reports to tie more into five-year forecasts and show here's what we projected. Break it down month to month, they'll show you here's how much we're over projections, just to kind of tie everything to that five-year. If the state does put so much focus on that, not that the reports we have aren't important, but I think if we can focus on that month to month, just see where we're at and help us gain a better understanding, and how that all in big face will tie that.
Sounds good. Okay, anybody else? Anything else to say? Do we have a motion to recess to executive session for ORC 121.22 for the purpose of the employment of personnel?
So. Mr. Murdaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Do you have?
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. And we are recessed. Thank God.